Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 6, 2024 City Council Meeting. It is 7:06 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Jillian Lutz from West Covina Hills 7th Adventist Church, and Councilwoman Lopez Viado will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Let us pray. Lord God, thank you so much for the safety of everyone arriving tonight despite the storm. Thank you for this city of over 100,000 souls that we have a privilege to live and work in. I pray, Lord, that as this meeting convenes tonight, that all will work together to make to continue to make this an amazing city, that as various projects, the pavement, whatever, are considered, that they will be done with an eye towards the good of everyone who lives here. Lord, I also I also pray your thanks. I sorry. I also thank you, Lord, for for the the act of heroism that we are honoring tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please place the flag. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Contos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Present.
City Attorney, is there anything to be be reported out of closed session?
Yes, but before we get to that, Assistant City Manager has asked that the council consider a proclamation of local emergency relating to the storm. This came up after the agenda was posted, and it needs immediate council action. So we need a motion and a second and a two-thirds vote to add this item to the agenda tonight.
Let's go move.
Second.
Roll.
Yes.
Councilman Contos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Aye.
And this item, this proclamation will be this resolution will be considered after the oral communication. And with respect to closed session and reporting out with regard to item number two on a motion by Councilmember Contos, a second by Councilmember Lopez Viado, and a vote of four to one, Mayor Calderon Tabatabai voting no, the council directed staff to file an amicus brief in support of the appellant in the Johnson v. City of Grant Pass matter regarding homeless issues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Tonight, for our presentation, we have a recognition of Sergeant Hernandez for his courageous actions on January 17, 2024. On January 7, on Wednesday, January 17, 2024, around 8:30 PM, a male entered the 7-Eleven located at 1319 West Merced Avenue and asked to purchase cigarettes. As the employee began assisting the male and placing the cigarettes into the black plastic bag, the male lifted his sweatshirt, brandished a firearm, and demanded the employee to open the register. Fearfully, the employee complied and began placing money into the plastic bag. Once the employee placed all the money into the bag, the suspect gathered the bag, at which point Sergeant Hernandez entered the store by coincidence. The suspect began to walk toward the exit, and as he did, the employee alerted Sergeant Hernandez of the robbery. Sergeant Hernandez quickly chased after the subject and was able to apprehend him. A search of the suspect confirmed he was in possession of a loaded handgun. The money was returned to the victim. Due to the heroic and quick actions of Sergeant Hernandez and other responding officers, the suspect was arrested for the robbery, and the 7-Eleven employee and other potential victims were unharmed. So today, we'd like to honor.
Testing.
They actually had a video posted, for those who haven't seen it, but I don't know if we have the video.
Oh, yay. Awesome.
It's right there.
There's no audio. It's off. It's just a video.
Woohoo. There you go. Woo.
Can I invite Laura Brantley, Representative from Senator Rubio's office, and Christopher Kent from Senator Newman's office to the front as well? All right, so Chief Bell, would you like to say a few words?
I was hoping to go last. I was gonna make up whatever Sergeant Hernandez didn't do, but I just want you guys to know that, you know, 17-year vet, he's a military, he served in the military. He's been on several units within our department, motors, obviously patrol. He's been on, he does our make team, which is some weird traffic mathematical thing. He's pretty gifted in that area. Right now, he commands our explorer post. You can see how sharp he is. You probably heard him when they were out there. He's been on our set team. He's been on a number of teams. He's a sergeant. He's been a sergeant for two years. But one of the things I want to point out about Sergeant Hernandez is, he's probably not going to tell you this, or maybe he will, but whenever he pulls up to a store or any place, he always assesses it, and he looks around, and he's looking for those things that might happen. You know, you can go through a whole career and not have what happened to him in 30 years, but it happened to him, and he was prepared. He was prepared to take action. It ended well. No one got hurt, suspect's in custody, and it was a great day for West Covina.
Laura Brantley, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much to the mayor, the Centennial Mayor, and the West Covina City Council. Thank you to the city of West Covina for having us here today. My name is Laura Brantley, and I'm here on behalf of Senator Susan Rubio, who could not join tonight. I do want to thank you so much for your service to the city of West Covina and the San Gabriel Valley. When I told our office about this story, no one could believe it. The entire staff, which is about 15 people, had to look this up for themselves, just couldn't believe it. It's incredible. I know West Covina always says, you know, this is a city that's dedicated to public safety, and and this is what they mean. Thank you so much for your service. On behalf of a grateful California, I have a certificate of recognition for you. On behalf of Senator Rubio, it is our honor to commend your valiant efforts to increase public safety and protect our community. Your commitment to courage and selfless dedication is admirable and sets an example for everyone to follow. Thank you so much for your service, the city of West Covina, and the entire 22nd Senate District. Congratulations.
Hello. Thank you so much, and we're incredibly indebted to you. In grateful recognition of your heroic actions on Wednesday, the 17th of January 2024, at great risk to your own personal safety, you bravely thwarted a crime in progress, quickly apprehending the suspect and safeguarding the life and property of the business owner. Your timely and courageous actions validate the training and sacrifices you have made over the course of your 17 years of distinguished service with the West Covina Police Department. On behalf of the California State Senate, thank you for your meritorious service, and best wishes on your continued success.
All right, before I do the presentation, would any of my council colleagues like to say anything?
I just wanted to say, great job, and this is what we've always wanted to see. So thank you. Actually, my in-laws live nearby there, and that 7-Eleven has gotten hit multiple times, so it's nice to see that you got that in action before hearing the after end result. But thank you so much.
Really quick, I think you gave West Covina PD and the West Covina City a very, very good reputation, okay? You did an excellent job because you not only, okay, arrested this person, you didn't show him, and this and that, and then I think that's showing how professional our West Covina PD is. So it's showing on the TV, and everybody say, oh, whoa, okay, West Covina PD doing a great job. I think that's why we're so proud, but thank you so much for your service.
I just want to thank you and congratulate you. I'm so happy to hear the positive things about our PD, and I just think that they're the best, the best in this county, in this nation. It's it's just wonderful. Thank you.
And Sergeant Hernandez, I'm grateful to have gotten to call you shortly after the the incident, and you are, just like I told you on the phone, you are a hero. You're a hero to all of us and a wonderful example, and we are not only proud of you, but we are proud of the entire West Covina Police Department for all that our law enforcement represents, and we're so appreciative that you are with us. So thank you. Thank you so much for all that you've done.
Yeah, and I just want to close before I give you the mic to share a few things. You know, Sergeant Hernandez, the way you acted and your professionalism, but also every time I've engaged with you, engaged with you out in public and seen you engage with the public, it is the best of what a police department can be. And you represent the badge, you represent the city with dignity and professionalism, and the way you acted in that moment shows great training and just shows the professionalism of our officers. And we thank you for your courageous actions on January 17, yes, because because we all saw it, but for all the years and every day that you've gone and you've represented us and protected us and done such a wonderful job. So on behalf of the city of West Covina, the certificate of recognition for your courageous actions on January 17, 2024.
How much did he steal, and would that hit the threshold of? I know this is going on, just curious.
I believe he had a weapon.
And the weapon too, but both, okay. Hopefully, justice is served.
I want to thank everybody. I don't think that there's.
Use the mic.
I want to thank everybody for being here, but I just want to say, I don't think there's any other officer that wouldn't have done the same thing. I mean, we all go through the same training. Our department is known for having some of the best training throughout the region, even the state, but I just, I think I did the same thing that any other officer in this department would have done, or let alone any officer in another agency. So thank you all. I appreciate this.
Now for our City Manager's Report, which will be given by our Acting City Manager, Paulina Morales.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So we'll get started. So the first item, oh, I'll wait for it to get up. Oh, we can get started next slide. Thank you. So we concluded our open houses for all of our city facilities. We ended at Cortez Park and Community, Cortez Park Community and Senior Center. The open house was Friday, January 26. We had a nice turnout. It provided the community an opportunity to learn about the different programs, classes, and activities that make the senior center a special place. And a big thank you to The Cove and F&amp;S Food Services for their donations for the event. The senior center has a lot of different activities and programs that we offer out of that facility. So if you have not gotten a chance to, it's always open for the community, and you can go see just exactly the amount of services that we provide for our seniors in that facility. So we're very, very proud of it, and welcome everyone to come take a look. The next item is the storm update. So as our City Attorney Tom Doherty mentioned, we will be putting on a declaration of local emergency due to all of the storms. So just to provide an update, we had some underpasses that flooded Citrus and Sunset. I know that we had to close several of them to thorough traffic, so we just, they're working, they're just, they weren't able to keep up with the constant rain that we're not used to in Southern California. So we are addressing those underpasses. We've also had some streets that have flooded, so just as you drive in the community, please be cautious. We also had a couple minor mudslides in the community that staff has been responding to. In addition, we had some leaks at various facilities from fire stations to dispatch PD, City Hall, that we're gonna, we had to address and will be addressing on a permanent fix. We also had some fallen trees with the community. I think the the image there shows the one that fell last night at Orange Wood Park and took out some electrical lines, so, or power lines. And then we have had some accidents throughout the community due to the heavy rain. So next slide is just, please stay safe to our community members, drive with caution, watch out for any fallen trees or downlines. If there's a downline or power line, please make sure to call it us, and don't risk, don't risk it. We are providing or offering sandbags at fire stations 1, 2, 4, and 5, and those are for West Covina residents. And then there are several LA County fire stations that are providing sandbags, and all that information can be found on our city website. Also, please stay informed. You can follow us on our social media, or you can register for Alert LA County, or you can follow them at ReadyLACounty on social media, but if you can please stay informed. So hopefully, the storm dies down, and we get some sunshine soon. Also, wanted to provide an update on some new businesses coming into West Covina. So we have Mami Mimosa that's going to be opening up on February 14 at McIntyre Square. Bird Chicken Rice is going down in historic downtown West Covina. The date is still to be determined, and they will be serving Kuh Mer-style chicken rice. I've never had that, but I'm looking forward to trying it. And then while under construction, Haven City Market is also highly anticipated. They're providing a variety of vendors, offering everything from pizza to sushi. Visitors can expect to find something to satisfy every craving. They're anticipating to have over 20 vendors at the food hall when they open up. They think they have over 40 or 45 vendor slots in the new food hall. And it is, the best part of the food hall is that there will be outdoor seating and entertainment at Hong Kong Plaza. So we're very excited for that project to come to completion. And I mentioned it last council meeting, but the survey for our budget is still online to get community feedback about how we want to prioritize our resources, our our funding, and so we're seeking that input from the community. So please provide your input and submit the survey online. It's available until February 29. As we kick off February, we'd like to recognize Black History Month. We will be presenting a Black History Month proclamation on February 20 at the City Council Meeting. This is a great opportunity for you to educate and learn about Black history and support Black-owned businesses. And then a couple upcoming events. City Hall will be closed, or City will be closed in observance of President's Day on Monday, February 19. We are getting ready to host the West Covina Spring Festival. I believe it's our third year having it. It's the second year in the historic downtown West Covina area, and it's March 9 and March 10. So we welcome everyone. I know we've been accepting applications for vendors and entertainment, so please reach out to our community service staff if you're interested in either, or we hope to see you there at the festival. The other event in March, on March 23, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, is our annual Easter Extravaganza, and we're going to be having it at Cortez Park at 9:30 AM and then at Del Norte Park at 10:30 AM. So we hope to see everyone there. And that concludes my City Manager's Report. Before we move on, I did want to pull item number 10, which is a consideration of the update to the pavement management program. We would like to reschedule that for February 20. So that's it for me, and then I can provide a presentation on the declaration of local emergency as well. So the Governor Newsom declared or proclaimed a state of emergency. Oh, sorry.
Let's have oral communication first.
I got ahead of myself. I apologize.
No, no worries. We're all excited to hear about the local emergency, so it's all understandable. Okay, so we will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when your name is called to speak. How many speakers do we have tonight?
I have three speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay.
Christopher Kent, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by Matthew Smith. Mr. Kent?
Greetings, Mayor Tabatabai, members of City Council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Christopher Kent, and I'm here to introduce myself as Senator Josh Newman's new district representative for the city of West Covina. Senator Newman proudly represents West Covina and portions of the East San Gabriel Valley to the California State Senate, and unfortunately, I did miss the centennial celebration last year, so I'd like to congratulate the city on that. And I'm also proud to join West Covina tonight in honoring one outstanding person whose actions made the city safer for all of us. And so Sergeant Hernandez's brave actions are a testament to his integrity and commitment to the law enforcement profession and to the city of West Covina. On behalf of the Senator and the California State Senate, we commend Sergeant Hernandez not only for his bravery on January 17, but also for his 17 years of service. I can't wait to begin working with everybody, and for more information on how to contact Senator Newman's office for assistance, you can call us as well as visiting our website. Thank you so much, and hope everybody gets home safe with the rain.
Thank you. John Shoemaker, followed by Matthew Smith.
Tonight, a diverse coalition of residents and voters, especially those in the 5th District, served Tony Wu with the notice of intent to recall him from office. They go into detail in there, but I'm going to bring some some things up as to why it was necessary to get to this point, in my opinion. Now, I know Councilmember Wu, or Mayor Pro Tem Wu, is going to say it's because of his ethnic background or something along those lines. No, it's far from it. While he's been in office, he has become under investigation for threats and possible physical assault upon a member of the city staff. When that became known, that person was terminated. We also have lost $5 million, or on the verge of losing $5 million, because Mayor Pro Tem Wu could not follow the rules on properly terminating a city employee. We have lost numerous cases and settlements because Councilmember Wu threatened, intimidated, badgered, or whatever you want to call, various city employees. There was also incidents, incidents, and it was when, you know, State Senator Newman was at a penning ceremony where Mayor Pro Tem Wu lost it, became highly agitated and angry, screamed and yelled at the fire chief, threatened to fire him, where a report was made about that investigation. My understanding from different people is that not only was that found credible, that there were five or six others that it may be, that may have brought things up that were found credible. Now, what I find absolutely amazing is I requested information about that report that supposedly was finished back in May or June. I was told I could not gain access to that report, and one of the reasons given is that it may be evidence in a criminal investigation. Is he now under investigation for six or seven instances of threats and intimidation of people? That's not very becoming of an elected official to have those things going on. And then you look at some of the decisions he has made. Back before Thanksgiving, or around Thanksgiving, three members of our community were killed in accidents on Amar for streetlights that the city has known were not necessarily safe. Now, the reason those streetlights were not changed was because we did not have the money. But in that same period of time, over the last couple of years, the city has spent upwards of $1 million to support the charity that Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Wu's wife is the chief financial officer of. We have $1 million for festivals, but we don't have money to protect the life of our residents. So no, Mr. Wu, it's not because of your ethnic background. It's not because of politics, because the people who are involved in this thing are everywhere, from progressive to conservative and everything in between, economically, from being very rich to being very poor, and all ethnic backgrounds. It's because of the things I previously listed as to why they don't want you in office. Just remember one thing. In 2018, when you were elected to District 5, 57% of the people voted for you. In 2022, 57% of the people voted against you. And since then, they have discovered more and more about your unprofessional and un-leadership type activities. So I believe people will be looking to recall you. I hope they all go out to Facebook and look, I believe it's Recall Tony Wu or something along those lines, and sign up so we'll get the signatures we need. Thank you.
Excuse me. Matthew Smith, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening, City Council. Last council meeting, I made a presentation regarding the applying for outdoor dining. The steps of how to file an administrative review, which is, which I will now summarize the eight-page document, and not go all over again on this, is two sets of plans, digital copy of submitted plans on a flash drive, notarized owner's permission, occupants' permission to enter and investigate site, deposit agreement, and complete business organization operations plan. That would be for four parking places that the city owns. That evening, I was told that the process would be clarified in the new code adoption presentation. I did not hear any changes during the presentation, so I emailed the city on January 30, asking for the changes to be described to me regarding the administrative review process and when the new application form would be ready, because the codes were being changed that night. Well, I was told that. I resent the email a few days later in February and have not gotten a reply. So I come tonight seeking clarification for rest. So I come tonight seeking clarification for restaurants interested in outdoor dining as spring approaches. In the process, is the process the same as it was before the code adoptions of last meeting? Is the city going to continue the outdoor planning that it presented to businesses in October? Last time I was here, I simply asked for some kind of response from city council. I will now ask for just three of your responses, to respond if you're in favor or not in favor of outdoor dining. This allows West Covina restaurants to plan facility changes and budget for those changes. So instead of asking for five, I'll just ask for three, so I can figure out the majority and restaurants can move on and make plans. I want to take a moment to say that I'm not trying to be the enemy. Me and Doug opened Bun Street and made changes to make the place look great. We took a massage parlor located next door to us and extended Bun Street. We took a smoke shop next to the extension of Bun Street, spent $80,000, and made a family ice cream shop. I am just asking for three of you to say comments that you're in favor or not in favor of outdoor dining, so businesses may plan accordingly. This has been going on since March 2023. Thank you.
R. Robinson?
Tragically, around Thanksgiving, Sergeant Hernandez wasn't there, but for $50 worth of liquor, the liquor store employee that confronted the criminal ended up dead in the parking lot. So the award that was given tonight reminded me of that. It came, it was about a mile from where I live. Anyway, I report tonight as the pandemic industrial complex, COVID, otherwise known as COVID medical tyranny, transforms our nation to basically a tracking and tracing program using self-assembling nanotechnology. And as synthetic biochemistry turns humans into 5G antennas, we're witnessing increased electronic warfare capabilities. Trans-humans become their own cell phones. Blood clots form, compromises our immunity as plastic atom polymers and heavy metal contaminants circulate in our blood. Our pandemic industrial complex is a continuous state of medical emergency these past years and promotes the unconstitutional digital slave state that is coming soon. The trusted news initiative, TNI Cartel, and our bought and bribed news media means we'll receive fear-mongering propaganda as a 24/7 reality backed up by MKUltra psychological CIA technology. A free press and the First Amendment are a key basis of our American culture. But journalist Tucker Carlson is now in Russia, perhaps to interview Vladimir Putin, and may not be allowed back into this country. Unsanctioned revealing of truth may place him in legal jeopardy as a journalist, similar to Julian Assange and whistleblower Edward Snowden. Why is our government so afraid of exposing the American people to open debate and exposing Americans to differing versions of revealed truth? It's an American tradition. The purpose enables that government, that our government can continue its unholy alliance with businesses, pharmacies, pharmaceutical industries, and cartels, which are displaying a maximum distortion of reality. I mean, you can't get any truth anywhere anymore. I mean, you have to be your own reporter. There's a two-page open letter to the American people circulating and a petition at the website, militaryaccountability.net. It's got 26,000 signatures so far, which attempts to expose and turn the tide of this sorry state of affairs we're in. Steve Hirsch, a high-tech millionaire and an MIT-educated engineer, an entrepreneur who has started several companies, was one of the two people who independently invented the optical computer mouse. He has been given New Zealand public health data, which proves beyond a shadow of a doubt that the COVID vax is unsafe and ineffective. It ought to be, I mean, the whole system should have been shut down years ago. The gene-editing technology, CRISPR-Cas9 must be banned worldwide immediately. The psych op that we're experiencing has to cease. Self-assembling and self-spreading nanotechnology must be discontinued for public safety and public health reasons. And I've got two seconds left.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker, Mayor. Mr. Gee.
Good evening, new mayor, councilpeople. I just want to say simple that you fund the project for Cortez Park and the lighting. I went by, I live in that area, and as a small child, I would have loved to have a field to play in lights, because I think it's the most important thing that adds to the city. Not parades, not festivals, but actually getting children to work together as a team, learning to do different things together with other people, no matter who's the better star or the player. It's about working together to improve the city. And this is a family community, a family community, where people go to work, they want to take care of their kids, they want to go see their baseball games, and they want to sit and dine at restaurants in the city. Along with this man who comes almost a year, trying to get approval for outdoor dining. I remember, you don't want drive-through restaurants, although we're number one in the city, or whatever aspect it was, as I've seen some of these meetings, but having people sit down together, having a meal together as family, it's important. Think about as your childhood, how many times you sat with your father or your mother and your siblings, after playing a game, going to a family event, Cortez Park lighting, helping to streamline this man's businesses. This is what West Covina used to be about, business and helping the community. Raise the standards. People who are not functioning well in the city, such as the homeless, don't add. They're not citizens, they're not residents, they're transients. Now, that's not a nice word to say, it's a truthful word. And when we raise the standard in the city, people want to move here, and people want to live here, and they want to raise families. So I ask you to work to raise families here and raise the standard. Thank you for your time.
I have one more speaker, Mayor Bill Elliott.
Good evening, city council. My name is Bill Elliott. My wife and I have made West Covina our home for the past 17 years, and we always vote. We love this community, we remain ever grateful for the brave men and women of our independent police and fire departments who stand in harm's way for us all. I want to personally thank Sergeant Abel Hernandez, who recently made national news, for standing in that void. It takes someone very special to run after a criminal armed with a gun, knowing full well that an armed robbery had just taken place. Sergeant Hernandez could have waited and called for backup, but without reservation or hesitation, he bravely sprang into action to remove this criminal threat from our community. He is a credit to the West Covina Police Department, my brother Marine, and we all owe him a debt of gratitude, and we should be thankful that a bona fide hero like Abel exists. To be honored here tonight for his bravery is appropriate and well-deserved, however. Watching Sergeant Hernandez standing next to such a reptile, who literally voted to withhold funding from our police department, is a stinging irony and a stark reminder of this Marxist mayor's moral decay that endangers us all. His unwavering support for criminals and law-abiding citizens, disregard for public safety, is an insult to the men and women of our police department who put their lives on the line for the citizens of this city every day. Behold, a hero and a zero. And if the mayor's far-left anti-police ideology and racist rhetoric isn't bad enough, it has recently come to light that he has violated his zero tolerance policy by cursing at one of his students. Brian has also been credibly accused of assaulting a child in his care, for which he received a one-year suspension from his employer. It's amazing to me that he was not fired. Was his victim a child of color, or has there been an attempt to whitewash away this distinction? As Brian would say, it's that imparent. He has gone to great lengths to conceal his lies of omission from the voters. Brian has a violent temper that he cannot control, and he clearly has a serious problem with keeping his hands off people. I know this personally, because Brian recently committed a battery upon me at an event we both attended in the city of Covina, in front of many witnesses, including my wife. His willful and unlawful acts bring discredit and shame upon this city and this elected body. Refusing to remove him as mayor is a reflection upon this council. What does this say about Brian? What does this say about this council? His lack of character and egregious misconduct makes him wholly unfit to serve as mayor of this city, and he should be removed from his leadership role forthwith and without delay. Should this brazen racist and violent child abuser be allowed to remain as our mayor? I would venture a guess to say that the voters who elected all of you would say no. Now, this is a call for action. In light of this evidence against Brian Tabataba, I strongly urge the members of this city council to act in solidarity with one another as a supermajority and do the right thing. There can only be, there can be no equivocation or hesitation on this issue. Brian should not be a schoolteacher, much less a mayor, and certainly not an assemblyman. Act in the interest of innocent children and deserving constituents. This time, you cannot simply look the other way. Brian is a filthy stain upon this city, and it matters not that you perceive him to be a friend. In fact, he is not. This skilled liar, his misconduct screams for his removal. May I remind you that Mike Spence, God rest his soul, was stripped of his title as mayor in this city for driving under the influence. Yet Mike Spence's only victim was Mike Spence. The same cannot be said of morally bankrupt Brian Tabataba. To allow him to remain mayor of this city is shameless support for a child abuser. What if it was your child? The time is now to remove, to move against this violent racist child abuser. If not now, when? I remember a pledge that was made to change the deciding vote to remove Brian as mayor once he brought discredit to himself once again to the city. Well, that day is here. Tonight is your opportunity to keep your word. Don't be a hypocrite. If not for this, then in God's name, what will it take? You know he is a snake. Muster up some moral courage and do the right thing.
No other speakers left, Mayor.
Acting city manager, may you please respond to public comment concerns and questions?
Okay. I wanted to welcome Christopher Kent. Oh, there he is. Thank you for the introduction, and we look forward to working with you and seeing you at our upcoming events, which I think the Spring Festival is our next event, so we look forward to seeing you there. In regards to public records request, the city takes these very seriously in response to them as required by state law. When the city is unable to provide a response to a public record request, we state the section of the law that applies to that denial. Matthew, we did receive your email, and we are preparing a response for it. I did want to clarify that the new outdoor dining process for getting a permit is part of the development code update. We heard the first hearing and the second hearing will be at the February 20th council meeting. It'll then be in effect 20, or sorry, 30 days after that second hearing. So if adopted on February 20th, the changes will take effect on March 21st, and we would be more than happy to go over those proposed changes. Like I said, we are preparing a response. And then I think, Mr. Gee, I just wanted to clarify that the item on the agenda tonight for the Cortez Park, Cortez Park Sports Field, it's a notice of completion, so the work has been completed. We're very excited to have the Musco lighting up for, at that field at Cortez Park, so we're happy that we're able to get that completed. It was part of a capital improvement project, so that's something that the council had identified as a need for the community, and we were able to use or find funding to provide that infrastructure for that facility, that park, for our community and our residents. And I think that sums up my...
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Okay, I just want to answer Matthew, okay, question regarding what is the council position regarding outdoor dining? I think last night, we already, five of us all agree, we all want to help the restaurant, okay, to have outdoor dining. I think it's important, okay, not only to help the business apply also, because a lot of people still scared, want to get inside. So if outside is available, and then, okay, and then they can apply. So, okay, I think the city is working on the, okay, the coordinates right now, okay, and hopefully you can apply. I think we really want all the restaurants, if they are interested, okay, and they have the space, then, okay, we can provide, and we try to work it out. So I think this last time, we'll, we talk about it. Okay, thank you.
City manager?
That was, that concludes my city manager's report. I can then give the presentation on the local emergency. I think this is the right time, Tom.
Go ahead.
So with the local rainstorm that has hit us this, the last couple of days, the Governor of California did declare a state of local emergency for the Southern California region, including Los Angeles County, on February 4th. That same day, LA County did declare a local emergency. And so declaring a local emergency for our city will allow us to apply for funding for the response to addressing issues that occurred because of the rainstorm. So it does allow us to then apply for funding. So that's the item before you, and I think we do need a motion to approve it.
I move the motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Okay, when we declared the emergency, especially with this rainstorm, and I think we saw a lot of damage, a lot of flooding, a lot of trees collapsed, and a lot of overtime. So we, how we can get this, okay, funding, and I think we can really look into the FEMA, okay, and they have a lot of grants, and I remember some people walking over there telling us, okay, we need to apply, and they have a funding for us. So please, city, to look into any funding we can get, so we can, okay, pay for the overtime, and I think a lot of licking roof, a lot of damage, a lot of issue. Okay, thank you.
One more thing, just history. Last year in February, we also had to declare a local emergency because of a rainstorm. So I think it's happening every year now. So thank you, that's it.
So I can make the motion now? Make the motion, I move the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to approve Resolution 2024-14 for proclaiming a local emergency. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
Aye.
Item passes 50, Mayor.
All right, now moving on to the consent calendar. Council, is there anything you would like to pull from the consent calendar? Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I want to pull the number two.
Okay, anyone else? Councilwoman Diaz?
I'd like to pull number five.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items number one through eight with the exception of number two and number five?
I move the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz and a second by Councilman Contos to approve consent calendar items one through eight with the exception of two and five. Councilman... Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
Aye.
Items pass 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to item number two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, okay. I think, okay, on this assignment, okay, appointee, okay, and for the city liaison, okay, most of them I agree, okay, but I have a couple concern and I maybe I want to amend it. Okay, some of the appointment, I think the first one I want to move, okay, as about the audit committee, okay, I think audit committee I've been served for two times. And then I really don't have any problem with the city budget, okay. I really, okay, I want to move the motion to recommend the mayor Tabataba to have this position. I think this position, okay, will help him, okay, with about budget issue, the concern about health department budget. I think with that, you can have a lot of questions answered by our finance director. So, so I will move the motion to replace me since I done this two, two times. And I think Councilwoman Diaz did it three times and all they doing right now. And I think, okay, maybe Mayor Tabataba can have this chance to look into, maybe can help us with some of the evil concern. So this is my motion.
I'll second.
We have the roll call?
I have a, one moment.
So this is a motion to approve, approve the appointments with an amendment to move me to the audit committee?
It is a motion to approve the mayor on the audit committee and removing Mayor Wu from the audit committee. Just the audit committee is the motion right now.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Okay, so I'm, so, but the, the agenda item is... Is to approve the appointment of council members to serve on various advisory boards. So we're going to, are we going to move through each, each item? Is it?
Mr. Mayor, I believe Councilmember Wu said he had wanted to deal with two of them and I think the first one's the audit committee.
And I have no problem to, okay, besides another one, I won't going to, okay, have the suggestion. The rest I have no problem. But, so I want to get this one first and then I want to move the second one.
So you can, you can take action on this one to, for Councilmember Wu coming off the audit committee and the mayor going on and another one, and then you can move a motion to approve the balance.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess...
Or we can, you can do both amendments at one time. It's up to you.
Yeah, I, I think, so just, so we can understand, understand the process and I'm just going to ask for clarification from the acting city manager. So when these appointments were made, it's my understanding that each council member was, was sent the appointments in an email and, and asked if they had any, any issues with, with the appointments. Is that, is that correct?
An email was sent to the council with the assignments that you were recommending.
And from my understanding, the, the email, I believe it was several emails, there it was asked if they had any issue with any of the assignments?
An email was sent out to the council members asking if they're, they would be able to make the time commitment for the assignments that you were making.
And did we get any responses?
I did respond.
Yeah, I believe Tony Wu did mention that he had an issue with...
With audit and with council government represent the city. And I did respond to, and I received the email regarding from Diane Campa, regarding how do you think about, do you still want to stay in the council government? I say yes. And then when the appointment see differently, then I send the email say, I have an issue with this.
So if I can clarify.
Yes, can you, can you clarify because there was an email sent to all of us asking that direct question and there, there was nothing shared with, with myself. And so here we find ourselves in the dais where this discussion could have easily occurred. And yet here we are now publicly discussing something that has never been publicly discussed in all my time here.
We did send an initial email, I think...
Two, two, two emails.
So the initial email was to council asking if they had any desires to change or if they are okay staying on the assignments that they had been assigned last year. Then after you received that, or we provided you with the responses, then you made the assignments and we shared those new assignments asking for the time commitment availability from the council members.
And, and, and there was no email response?
I believe as Mayor Protem mentioned, Tony Wu did say he had an issue with some of the assignments.
And this email response was not shared with me? Why?
I believe because I shared it with you verbally.
And, and why, why not share it with me in writing?
It was a very simple email. We could share it with you, but I relayed...
I, I, well, if, if we want to be full disclosure, I, I asked for the written email. So if you had the written email, it should have been shared. Because I, I directly asked if there was an issue, then Mayor Protem would have responded to the email. And so you decided not to share it. I, I don't, I don't understand.
And I will apologize. I shared with you that verbally. There is no other issue than I had shared it with you verbally. So I thought that was sufficient communication, but I can definitely forward you the...
Why would you think if it was sufficient when I directly asked for the written response? So that way I could respond to Mayor Protem Wu. That way we could have a communication on this subject.
I do apologize and I was, I misunderstood or that you wanted the...
You misunderstood. Interesting. No, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing, I'm bringing this up because I think in a, in a proper process...
Okay, connect something?
I, I have the floor and I'll give you the floor in a second. When we're, we're dealing with, with colleagues and we want to be professional and I, I really do want to honor people's wants and what boards they want to serve on in a professional manner. It's why we sent two emails. Because the first email did not get a response and then Diana sent out a second email. If there had been a response to the first email, there would not have been a necessity for a second email. There was not a response that was, was shared to me even though that's what was asked for, for it to be in writing. So that way we could have a discussion. So the, again, I think a professional courtesy, which, it was, it was a courtesy that has never been offered in the past. There, there's never been a, after the mayor has assigned, that then an email is sent to ask the council if they're okay with their assignments. Or at least I have never received that email. And from conversation, this is something out of the ordinary that was done. So I, I just, I just want to make that clear.
Okay, can I say something really quick?
Let, let me, I'm, we're waiting for the response of the assistant, the acting city manager.
If you could clarify your question.
This, this was out of the, the ordinary protocol.
I don't believe that this was done in the manner that we did it this time last year.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, okay. I need to, I know you guys have, okay, I did respond to Diana's, okay, Diane regarding my concern and that I want to stay. He said, do you want it? I say, yes, okay, I still want to, because I'm over there and I bring 383 and I'm doing a lot of thing. I'm, okay, I don't want to just halfway and just yank it. Okay, and so let's quiet the response. I did talk to the city manager. But I want to share with you how we did it before. When I was a mayor, I called each of the city council and I say, how do you think? Can you do this? Okay, can you, I say, no, I don't have a time. So I say, okay, then I find somebody else. I did call each of the council to have a courtesy. And then when Letty Lopez Viado, the city, okay, councilwoman, and when she was a mayor, she did ask me, I say, hey, can you do, do you have a time to do this? Okay, and Dario Casiano was the mayor, he did the same thing. So we all kind of working out the availability that time, okay? And so we basically, and settled. So nobody have any issue during, okay, during the vote. And if any people have an issue, I think they can raise their, okay, say my objection about that and they decide, okay, do you have that vote or not? Maybe I don't have the vote or I will stick with what your assignment, okay? If I got vote, then I might have a chance to get, okay, the thing I want to continue to finish. So I think the courtesy is both side, okay? And as the mayor, okay, you can, I, I, when I received your assignment, I say, why he didn't ask me about, I want to continue since you're going to replace me on the council government? Okay, and then I remember the city manager say, why I didn't call you to say, hey, I want to stay on the job. But normally it's the mayor say, hey, do you want to do this and this or that since you have that position? And that's what I did when I was a mayor. So anyway, I just want to explain to you, it's nothing like this or that. Just, I don't know, okay, why we didn't have a communication with you beforehand. He called me. You called me about your trip, okay? I said, no problem. You can call me with this. I say, Tony, okay, can I, okay, discuss about your position, talk? I never received any of your phone call that, okay, hey, maybe I want to do it. Can you let me do it? And we can talk, okay? And I would say, okay, let's discuss. Can you let me finish, okay, for one more years? This or that? So again, communication between the mayor and the council should be there. So anyway, this is my explanation to you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Thank you. The email I received from Diane Campos was just pretty much stating, do you want to stay in your position that you had last year? And I saw the, I saw the list and I'm like, I wasn't on this one last year. But that was all where we left off. But if this is a concern, if you want to pull this and then discuss internally, we can. You know, so it doesn't have to be out public because this is internal representing for different committees. So if you wish, we can...
I have no issue with that.
Pulling it out, let's have a discussion here on all the positions. I'm just putting that as an additional thing.
Thank you. No, I, I have no issue with us deciding tonight. I, I think what needs to be understood was that there, there, there was a process, there was outreach and that the, the communication was, was not made. There, there, there wasn't an email sent. As far what happened in the past, I've, I've never received a, a phone call regarding the assignments on, on which assignment would, would I be okay with? Or was I okay with any changes? So this is why, and speaking with the acting city manager, I was under the understanding, since this has been the understanding for the three years I've been on council and what was communicated to me by the city manager was that this was the process we've always gone through. And so to, to now hear that the process was different, obviously is concerning to me. And so that's, that's a reality. And, and so, you know, I think this, this idea that it was misunderstood, I think speaks poorly of the acting city manager. And I, I, I don't think that's an acceptable answer. And so I'd, I'd like us to continue though and to have the vote. We're, we're, we're open and, and public now. It's, it's on the agenda. And so...
I just have a quick question.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
You, sir. Okay, I just have a quick question for the city attorney. What are we doing? This is correct, legal? I want to make sure what we are doing is comply with the city coordinates. I think this is something, okay, I think this is your concern, okay? I think...
No, no, my, my, my concern isn't whether we're doing this legally. My, my concern is that the, there was a lack of professionalism and the acting city manager is saying it was, it was her failing and I'll accept that in, in the way this process was, was handled. The, as, as far as any, any legality of these appointments, there, there's nothing illegal about what's going on right now in the dais. I think the, the reality and what I want for the public, this isn't a transparency, is, is to understand that the, the processes that we had in place were not followed through and the acting city manager has just said that it was her fault for not following through.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, quickly, the process is you assign, the city council ratifies. So it's before you tonight for a motion. If there's a motion to make any changes, you can do it in one fell swoop, one motion and then, and then act on it.
Yes. Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
And I know with assignment, it changes based on whose position. Because I do remember when I had assigned this, I remember it didn't, the city manager didn't, wasn't involved, like, and don't remember who it was, Mayor Protem or Councilman Darios. He quickly called me and said, I can't do this. But he spoke to me, you know, he called me directly. And that was a, you know, we brought this up in our meeting. But it's, it wasn't like, oh, the city manager, you know, or he went to her. Well, at that time it was Mr. Dave Carmaney. So it is changed depending on how it is and it's not, there was not really a protocol or a procedure because like, you know, I know Mayor Protem's, we probably contact them, but everybody just either they have this and then sometimes they contact you directly or sometimes they use the city manager. So there is not a protocol person.
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but the acting city manager said that there was an email and that email was, was not shared even though the process that we were communicating was through email. And it's, it's why Diana sent out multiple emails. So it, it's, it's not that the, the communication didn't occur. The communication did occur. Acting city manager just said that there was an email that Mayor Protem Wu sent to Diana and that email should have been shared because that was the whole purpose of us sending out the email. I was asked and, and I said, yes, go ahead and send out the email. We got no responses on the first email. So then was asked to send out a second email. So we sent out the second email. This is the first time that I'm hearing there was a response by Mayor Protem Wu to the second email. And this is, this is the issue. It, it isn't that the, that, the way Mayor Protem Wu decided to communicate, it's the fact that he decided to communicate through email, which was the, the proper response to an email that was sent. And the failing is the acting city manager failed to share the email response to the, what I inquired. So instead of making a phone call, we decided to go through email. And that's, you know, that's another way to communicate. And it was, I believe, proper protocol. It, it also gives a written record, right? When you send something in email, there's a, there's writing. So that way if anyone makes a public records request, you know, those, those things are there. Sometimes you can talk on the phone, you can communicate and people forget, right? Stories change. But through email, that's why I like to respond through email, especially when it has anything to do with city council things. So that way we have the written record and, and that's, that's why. I, I decided to do it in that way.
And I'm not going to drag it on, obviously, because like on my situation, it wasn't by email. It was a verbal. So if city manager gave me the verbal, we spoke, took care of it, no problem. So granted, every change has, you know, personal things. So, but again, you know, we can, obviously it's, it's clear. We're, we're at that point. We can go ahead and continue.
So does someone have, did you want to say more?
I just want to have a question. Should we do it separately or should we do it together?
There's one, there's one resolution. You can make a motion with any changes that you want.
So you want me to combine both together?
That's fine, whatever there is.
I don't know that the vote is, would be the, the same, okay, or different. So should we, should we put together?
If you can, you can do one, you can do the audit committee and then whatever.
Yeah, let, let, let's do the audit. Yeah, let, let, let's do the audit committee first, then I move another one. So then each one will be have independent, independent vote. So I already moved the motion to so, to have our mayor, Tabai Tabai, to in the audit, since he never been there, and he is concerned with the budget. So I think it would be perfect timing for him, that's what, okay, in the, a good intention. So I moved the motion, we have a second from our city, okay, councilwoman Diaz, so please.
Yes, I had a motion by Mayor Protem Wu.
Discussion, a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Kanto.
Before the vote is placed, just wanted to ask, in the same way that this would have taken place offline, if it were done previously, would the mayor like to serve on the audit committee? Let's ask that first.
Well, considering the current appointments, in which there are several appointments that the mayor has to serve on, and the fact that I have also appointed myself to the cog, if we go through with the current appointment, then the answer would be no. Because that would, that would then really have me taking up almost all of the important boards.
So, oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So then the next question would be, if, if you would prefer not to serve, the question is, who would be, who would, who would prefer to serve?
Then I, I can add on this, Mayor, can I? Okay, thank you. Okay, and then I will put two requests together. Since Mayor worry about his time, okay, then I will reduce his burden. I will take the cog on my shoulder. So, okay, okay, so basically, he doesn't have to serve this heavy duty, time-consuming council government. So I will move the motion to, okay, and reduce Mayor Tabai Tabai to serve the San Gabriel Valley Council Government. And I will be continued to serve, because I request to the city that I request to continue to serve due to I bring 1383. Okay, regarding the organic thing, I'm still working on the, how do we solve our ethnic issue? And the second thing is regarding the synchronization traffic signal, I'm still working with the cog, try to put a SUSA with synchronization from a SUSA city to city of industry. And I'm halfway there. And number three, homeless, okay, major age money. Now I continue to try to get the result back to the city. So that's why important for me to stay there. And I'm going to move the motion, reduce his burden, heavy duty. You have to show up in person, in Morovia, into hours of discussion, and try to find the resource for the city. So I moved the motion, okay, to, for me to replace, okay, and for his appointment, revise to I continue serving cog.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, there was already a motion and a second on the floor, so we vote on that first, and then entertain a, a separate motion?
Mr. Mayor, so we'll take that as an amendment to that motion. It's not a substitute motion. So the motion, it's an amendment to the motion that Mayor Protem, Mayor Calderon Tabat Tabai serves on Finance Committee, and Mayor Protem Wu is off the Finance Committee. And then also that Mayor Protem serves on cog, and Mayor Calderon Tabat Tabai is off cog. So it's an amendment to the motion, does a second accept the amendment?
So I'll second that.
Okay, so discussion before the vote. Councilman Kanto.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to, to, to ask the same question about the second part of what the Mayor Protem had asked. So with regard to the, the appointment to the cog, is, is there anyone else who wishes to serve? Just, just since we're going through this discussion here, just to, just to make sure that that's transparent here. If anyone else, I mean, the, the two of you who wishes to serve, so the motion is to reappoint the Mayor Protem to the cog?
I, I believe that is his, his motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so before the vote, just so I can, I can take us through the, the process of, of why I made the decision to place myself on the cog and Councilman Kanto as, as the alternate, is, is the, the reality is, Mayor Protem Wu, you have, you have served on the cog for, for many years. And the, the reality is that we, we have not really collaborated with our surrounding cities. We have not gone into any leadership on the cog during, during your years on, on service. We are one of the largest cities in the San Gabriel Valley cog. And the reality is, is we have, we have not been in any of the leadership positions, nor controlling of any of the monies, the funds that have come, nor presentations to this body regarding what's going on in the cog. Our relationships with surrounding cities is, is not strong. We don't have, again, any collaborative efforts going on. Plus, when you're a member of the council of government, it's not just the surrounding cities, it's also relationships with the county, which has obviously been extremely frayed. And as some, some may know, the cog also deals very much with our state senator and state assembly member. And those funds have also not funneled to West Covina. And so, understanding the, the partnerships that I've already been able to develop with some of the surrounding cities, as well as Councilman Kanto's relationships, and his relationships with the federal government, is why this decision was made. Again, I, I understand Mayor Protem has, has held this position for a long time. But I also understand the Mayor Protem has wanted to move West Covina away from collaboration with surrounding cities, and also with the county. And so to have, to appoint someone to the council of governments, which is a collaborative effort between cities, when the Mayor Protem has made it clear that we are to be isolated as a city, seemed counterproductive, and is why I've made that decision, and why I am against the motion and the amendment.
Anyone else?
I think we have a motion.
Anyone else? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Kanto.
May I ask the, the city staff, is it, what has been the tradition of, of those who have served on the cog? I haven't been around long enough to know. Do folks who serve in the position of mayor typically serve on the board of the cog? Or is it more a matter of any, whoever the council typically appoints? What is the general standard best practice?
I know on, if my way, on this whole committee.
Hold on, okay. Staff, and then I will recognize, so recognize the city manager first.
Councilman Kanto, I do not know that off the top of my head, what, who has been on the council as far as if it's the mayor position or the Mayor Protem. It really depends on the individual that the mayor, at that moment, assigned it to, whether it's through availability or desire to be on, on the board. So I would have to look into that, not this time.
Mr. Mayor, so in light of, oh.
No, you, you still have the floor.
Okay, so in, in light of that, because of that being an outstanding question, is it possible that there can be a thought of that we, we take this offline and, and figure out these appropriate protocols? So that way, we make our decisions based on, on proper process? And in the meantime, to keep various individuals in place until, until this matter is resolved?
Mr. Mayor, the process of that, you have a motion on the floor. The process of that would be making a substitute motion to either continue it or bring it back.
Then I, Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we, we continue this, this matter, so that there can be further discussions, and to return to a, a process of ongoing, interactive discussion, the way it has been done in the past.
Mayor Protem Wu.
And I think, so you are doing a substitute motion, right?
That was a motion, he's looking for a second right now.
No, we already have a motion and a second regarding, okay, Mayor Tabai Tabai will be in audit committee, since he never been there. And I want to stay in the cog, so reduce his burden. Okay, and, and that is the first and second. And that is the motion, and there is a, and that is the second.
Mr. Mayor, that is a motion, and, and Councilmember Kanto just made a substitute motion, and there is.
Understand, so he want to continue or table this for the future?
Correct, is there a second for that motion?
I understand, but what we doing have nothing illegal, right? Everything is the.
No, everything is fine, your procedure is fine.
What we doing, everything is fine.
Absolutely.
And I think, I think the appointment should be continued. We, the rest, we have no problem. The rest of the appointment, assignment, okay, I don't have any issue, okay, at all. It's just these two, okay, I think, okay, and, okay, I think we should, okay, finish up, okay, so we can have, everybody have their position to represent the city in different of entity. Okay, and I think we should continue to get this thing done, right? Then dragging for, in the future. So let's get this done tonight, like Mayor say, okay, let's get this vote done. Okay, and so we don't have to continue to drag this in, let's get over this thing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
So there's the motion on the floor? Is Councilman Kanto?
Just to clarify, I, this was, Councilwoman Lopez Viado had that thought earlier, and so I wanted to, I think that it's a good idea to, to continue, in other words, to, to postpone this, this discussion, so these various issues can be ironed out properly. We could, we could move forward here, but I would, I would prefer that we, we have these discussions in, in, in a way that was more traditional to how we have done this previously, with the past, past appointment processes.
So we, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Okay, so seeing, seeing the original motion stand.
Okay, yes, so, yes.
Excuse me, so, I'm sorry, so we.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Okay, and so we're going back to my motion. So basically, my motion will be have an audit committee to our mayor, and I will continue in the cog, yeah.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
I just wanted to address Councilman Kanto's question. Councilman Kanto, there is no traditional way of doing this. In the past, everybody's done it differently. So I just wanted to make that known. And then the second one, out of all the committees, there's only two that the mayor automatically gets appointed. And that, that's a fixed one, and that's the Los Angeles County and City Selection Committee, and the Sanitation District Board, where the mayor automatically gets appointed. So obviously, that is not being touched.
All right, so we have a motion.
Have a motion.
A second, and, and so just before we, we do the roll call, just because I want to, Councilman Kanto, I wanted to respond to his motion. Because meetings are upcoming, I think it is important that we vote, and we, we set this up now, so that way we are represented on all these boards as, as meetings are coming. So go ahead, roll call.
So I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wu, and a second by Councilwoman Diaz to place Councilman Wu as the main representative on the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government, and Mayor Calderon Tabat Tabai on the audit committee, removing Mayor Protem Wu. Councilman Kanto?
No.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabat Tabai?
No.
Item passes three to Mayor.
All right, moving on to item number five. Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, I'd like to add an intersection to this agenda, to add the flashing stop signs, we can do that?
Mr. Mayor, you, you can't add it to this existing, you can have it come back.
Okay.
Council vote on it.
Okay, can we have that come back? Because I know it's been on, in the past agenda.
We do that at the end of.
Mr. Mayor, identified what, what intersection?
Okay, so the intersection of East Temple Avenue and East Woodgate Drive, it's not on this agenda, but because it was a traffic recommendation, I wanted to bring it up. So to, to bring up, bring it back, whatever, that agenda.
Do, do we do this now, or do we do this at, at the end, in, in council request?
Either way, it's now, we can't, staff knows that they can bring it back, and then we can reiterate it at, at the end, if you'd like.
So I, we can, I, so I could entertain a mo, or take a motion and a second, and then add that as a recommendation to bring back at a future council meeting?
Okay.
Okay, so I want to move that.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz, and a second by Mayor Calderon Tabat Tabai to approve council item number five, which is a consideration of approval of traffic recommendations from the traffic committee meeting between September 23rd and November 23rd, with a recommendation to bring back a flashing stop sign? Stop sign at, solar flashing stop sign at East Temple and East Woodgate Drive. Councilman Kanto?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabat Tabai?
Aye.
Item passes five zero.
All right, moving on to item number nine, public hearing regarding the program year 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Action Plan. The matter set for public hearing is the development of a draft 2024 Community Development Block Grant. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the development of the draft PY 2024 CDBG Action Plan. There will first be the presentation of the staff report. Then we shall hear comments from the public. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Kelly McDonald will be presenting the report.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. This hearing concerns the program year 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Action Plan. The city receives an annual grant of CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The CDBG program works to ensure decent, affordable housing, to provide services to the most vulnerable in the community, and to create jobs through the expansion and retention of businesses. As a recipient of these funds, the city is required to prepare an annual action plan that guides the intended use of the grant funds. In recent years, the city has used CDBG funds for such activities as the domestic violence victim advocate in the police department, the senior meals program, the business assistance loan program, the housing preservation program, public infrastructure projects, and public services such as food banks, Meals on Wheels, and homeless services. This is the first of two required public hearings. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the needs, on the community on which the draft action plan will be based. In April 2021, the city council approved the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan based on a prioritization of community needs. Amended in 2022, the current prioritization shown in Table 1, there are eight categories: economic development, homelessness, infrastructure improvements, owner occupied housing, public facilities, rental housing, public services, and non-homeless special needs. The categories of need are more fully described in Attachment 1. Now, for this purpose, the priority level doesn't speak to relative importance, but as to whether or not CDBG funds will be used to address a need. High translates to that CDBG funds will be expended. Medium would translate into maybe, CDBG funds may be expended, and low translating into a, will not be expended. The needs and priority levels may be amended tonight or at any time with proper notice. And with the approval of this item, staff will begin to draft the action plan, and the process of evaluating public service proposals and potential capital projects against the approved prioritization. Once the draft action plan is finalized, it'll be made available for a 30-day required public review period. Then it'll be presented along with the proposed activities and funding recommendations to the city council for consideration in a second public hearing. The city council has the following options to approve the staff recommendation or provide alternative direction. Notice for the hearing was published on January 26, and there have been no comments received. There's no. 26, and there have been no comments received. There's no fiscal impact resulting from this report, so it is a recommendation of the staff that the city council directs staff to draft the program year 2024 action plan, based on the program year 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan priorities as amended. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I had a question in regards to the homeless. I know we allocate CDBG funds for that. Is that possible to get matching funds from County Measure H?
The measure, the Measure H funds are coming, are flowing through the COG. There have it, I don't anticipate, don't anticipate opportunities to apply directly for Measure H funds. The programs have been going through the COG, and we've been applying for those as we're able to. But this, most recent go-around has been regional, regional projects that all the cities have opted into and get a service. For example, we have an additional day of La Cada service in the city, so that's.
So I guess, because it is under the category of homelessness, I just wanted to know if that is being utilized to make sure, I mean, in conjunction, to make sure that that's also being covered. I just wanted to look at all that aspect. But obviously, since we don't have all the numbers and information and everything, I guess I'd have to wait till we get that going, right?
Correct.
So I have to wait. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone present who wishes to comment on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mayor.
All right, I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing. Ask for city council discussion?
I want to move the motion to, we see on file?
Second.
All right, city clerk, can we?
Mr. Mayor, the motion is staff recommendation, move the motion for staff recommendations, conduct the public hearing, and direct staff to develop an action, a draft action plan. That's the motion.
So move.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Protam Wu, and a second by Councilman Kontos. Is that, did I hear that correctly? Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabat Tabai?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, I believe we are now moving to city council reports. Are there any AB 1234 conference and meeting reports? No? Any city council requests? No requests? All right, city council comments? Mayor Protam Wu?
Thank you, Mayor, okay. Delighted note, okay. I want to wish everyone, okay, this coming Saturday, and the Happy Lunar New Year. That's the year of, I don't know how many thousand, okay, and, but, I wish, I think the rabbit is gone. Now, what is the new symbol? Year of what?
One?
No.
Dragon.
A dragon.
Dragon, oh, it was a D.
Twelve times, twelve symbols. So after rabbit is dragon. So happy year of dragon after Saturday. I wish everyone have a happy, okay, and Lunar New Years, and, okay, may all your wish come true, and be healthy and be happy. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Thank you. Just for the residents who noticed that I haven't been in attendance to the last two meetings, I was physically ill, pretty much bedridden like the past two months. But I've recovered, feeling much better. And so I didn't get to go out, celebrate vacation, none of that. So I was just pretty much staying at home, but I am back. So thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I just want to also congratulate Councilwoman Lopez Viado on your new position. And I saw you with Jackie Robinson's family. Jackie Robinson, one of my heroes, and I was so jealous. But it looked wonderful. And I know you're going to bring great things. So congratulations. And yes, let's have a wonderful Year of the Dragon, and look forward to getting through this rain this week. So everyone stay safe, drive safely, try to stay home if you can, and have a healthy, good night. This meeting is adjourned.